Good morning. Welcome to Commissioners Court, September twenty fifth, regular session nine o'clock. We have a full quorum present. Here you serve five minutes for proper, or the General was properly posted. If you please rise for prayer and pledges.
Father, we humbly bow before you. First thing I want to say is thank you for the break. Father, we need to get more than we need to hear. Father, we need to pray. Thank you for hearing our prayer. Father, we ask, Lord, that you be with this court. Father, we pray that they'll make the decisions for the residents of Walker County that are beneficial to the county. Father, we thank you for your presence here this morning. We ask that you lead us and guide us through this. Father, the Bible verse that I had this morning is found in Matthew, chapter nine, chapter five and verse nine. Blessed are the peacemakers. They shall be called the children of God. Father, may the peacemakers realize that we're called to be peacemakers and help to end the strife in America. Father, we ask, Lord, that you lead and guide each one of us through this day. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
The good God, the Lord, and the Savior of America. And to the Republic, it's your Savior's calling action. And the people will pray every day of their life. Amen, Texas, Lord. Lord, you be interesting. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I got no systems inputs. And consent agenda contains
Oh, Patricia.
Nineteen items. I'm gonna pull number six. Anybody got anything else?
No, sure.
Motion, we accept the consent agenda, pulling the second.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, number six. Approved proclamation twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-two. National four H week, October first through the seventh. We have the four H group here. Big group. Let's go.
All right, so we've got some four H members here. National four H week is going to be October first through seventh, and they're just gonna ask the job by National four H week here in Walker County. So they're gonna read the proclamation to you.
All right, whereas the Walker County is proud to honor the Texas Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for fifteen, a hundred and fifteen years of providing experience-based education to youth throughout the Lone Star State and whereas the admirable program which seeks to provide a learning experience for all youth through their head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, inform attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society and
whereas the programs, more than five hundred and fifty thousand urban suburban enrolled youth participants ranging in age from eight to eighteen, come from a diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state and
whereas throughout its proud history, the, or wait, not that, where the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were not for countless, were not for the service of this more than thirty thousand volunteers who had given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas and
whereas throughout its proud history, the four H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans through its innovative and inspiring programs and continues to build character and install the values that have made our state strong. Now therefore be it resolved, the Walker County hereby, the Walker County Commissioners, for hereby designate October first through seventh, twenty twenty-three as National Four H Week in Texas and commend the four H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success.
All right. I wanna get a, I'd be lucky to, right? Can't get a motion. Good, good, good. I got a motion, second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carry. All right. We got
Black. Black.
We're gonna sign all of them. That one too. Y'all get two and we're gonna keep one. I need to steal a black one, thank you. He's standing. Hold it up, sir. Just go this. Oh, well. You know, I will never know. It's going back down, I guess. I get this in here too.
We need to get a picture. We'll get more.
We're gonna get a
Yeah, we gave you a real picture here in a second.
Have those back.
You got one more.
You don't sit, please, either. Not a tight one.
Y'all doing good back there.
You let them hold it.
I mean, get posters. Hold the paper down.
Thank you. One, two. Wow, three. One more. Smile. Sorry. Monday. Thank you.
It's a pleasure. We're here.
We truly appreciate you.
It's awesome. Great people.
They're running.
Thank you, as always, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming by and having a great day. Thank you so much. Nice meeting you.
We got them going both ways. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for the water.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, man. As always, good to see you again. Y'all are my heroes. Now with that, we also have Corey here. He is our extension agent from Prairie View A&amp;M. Let him introduce and tell us a little bit about you. Corey, if you'll state your name, full name.
Okay, so just right here, be good?
Yeah.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Corey Hicks. I'm the Ag and Natural Resources Prairie View Extension Agent there in Houston County. I've been there for ten years. So now we are here in Walker County. And so I look forward to coming down and sharing some of my experiences and knowledge that I've obtained, brought the resources here to Walker County and thank you, everybody, for being here.
You're stationed in Houston, but you cover here, Houston, and what counties?
Just Houston and Walker County is what I'll be covering. So Houston would kind of be my more in-depth county.
Houston.
And here would be more of an outreach county.
And my name is Ashley Pellerin James. I'm an extension of, well, I'm the interim program leader for Ag and Natural Resources at Prairie View A&amp;M University. I oversee kind of all of the extension agents for Prairie View A&amp;M University across the state of Texas. And we have a statement or a federal mandate to assist counties with their limited resource, historically underserved, and socially disadvantaged farmers to provide educational resources for them. The benefit to you all is Corey is here at no cost to you. So
Well, we already like it.
That's the very part. But he brings with him a wealth of knowledge and also resources that are available to Prairie View A&amp;M University. He will extend them here as well. He will be working in tandem with the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service. They've already been working well together and we've personally been some brainstorming as well. We've met with Judge Colton, Judge Christian, sorry, earlier, just on a committee. So we are excited, thrilled to have Corey here to be a representative of Prairie View, but also to assist the constituents in this county. So assist the great work that's going on with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife. If you need anything, Prairie View is here to assist you all in any way. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Now we look forward to.
Proud to have you.
Thank you. We're gonna skip down to number forty-five. Discuss and take action online, John Matthews of eighteen thirty-six to apply for TABC license to sell alcohol and county property during Fairland Square. Who we approve Fairland Square. We didn't want to make it official that we are okay signing this per letter.
I'm good. I make the motion to approve agenda item forty-five as presented.
You know, I know we've done it in the past, but I still got an issue with alcohol on county property and I won't support it.
So I'd like it explained a little more. I know we've got some pictures from the chamber here. Mr. Ray, I'm a little confused, I guess, too, kind of like Ronnie, you know, this is county property, I know, and y'all reserve the right to the Brown Square and through the Chamber and the city and all that, but I'd like a little more information, I guess. Could you help us out?
Sure. Judge, Commissioners, thanks for giving us opportunity to experience in front of you. So this will be our forty-ninth year that we've executed this program. And Laura Green, our Vice President of Engagement, Laura, she has been leading that segment of our work and since she's been here with the chamber for just completed twenty years and during that time, we've had what we call the water and hole segment of the event. We've been working with EMS, a private security firm, local officers from a variety of different agencies, one of about twenty officers on the ground at the event. We've never had an issue of security and making sure that it's a family-friendly event and that's really important. We've, three years ago, the fence in the whole area, including the food court, provided security at each entrance and exit from that space. And we think that we have a good plan to continue to provide a family-friendly event for the community.
Also have license to see bartenders.
And I understand you, I was concerned wanting to do it, but we stopped it at the storm shelter and my position is just gonna be no on county property. But there's plenty of other folks up here that may not have a problem with it.
Well, the only concern I had was, you know, we, a couple of us voted against charge and admission to use the parking lots at the DA's office. And just, you know, I would much rather see it done on a a donated level. I don't have a problem with them sitting over there doing it. But I hate to see them charged for it, you know, because it is a public parking lot. So this just kind of run in with the same thing y'all have been doing. I don't think at this point I have a problem with it, but I just kind of want a little clarification. So, thank you.
Second. Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? All right. He voted for it. Motion passes.
Can we, before we go, we check.
Thank y'all.
Please come out and enjoy that.
Can we check with Dan and find out where we're at?
Man, we still good on Zoom?
Yes, sir.
The link, does the link on our county website work? Because I just had somebody text me saying that they clicked on it and it did not work.
It's updated now.
It's updated now? All right.
I will go to number twenty. We need to wait on Rachel.
I have no idea.
Is Rachel online?
Dude have some questions, buddy.
I don't see her.
She was having troubles getting through, so give her a second to
Yeah, we're gonna go to number twenty-three, and when we see Rachel, we'll go back to EMS. Emergency Management, number twenty-three, discuss and take action on Walker County Family Assistance Center Plan, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, sure. We finally got this out of my head and got it on paper. This is a combination of both the county and city of Huntsville. All the family assistance plans that it's a sister plan to our mass fatality plan. What we would do in case of a mass fatality or mass casualty here in Walker County and set up a family assistance center to help families get back on their feet.
I move to approve.
Okay.
All in favor, raise your hand. Yeah. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
All right.
Yes, sir.
All right, Dan, Rachel says that Zoom on the county website says it's waiting for the host to start the meeting.
I had that same problem and I tried to get on it. Did you?
May have to refresh the page and try again.
All right, do we have anybody else on Zoom?
All right, number twenty-four, discuss and take action on the agreement between the District Attorney's Office and Al Enterprises. I'll make that motion to approve. This is what they budgeted for.
Wouldn't this is the y'all are going to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's budgeted, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know, made the most? Yes, sir. Second. Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. I thought Quentin wasn't here. I thought we were gonna get to do something to him. Do something better than see. Number twenty-five was pulled. Twenty-six, discuss and approve Walker County twenty twenty-four Workers' Compensation Renewal Questionnaire, Swinski. So Yes, sir.
Hey, this is just our annual workers' comp renewal questionnaire where we have to provide the buildings that we have, the number of employees, and what we believe is the main payroll. And then that's how they calculate what we pay them quarterly. At the end of the year, we'll do an actual and most of the time we end up getting monthly.
Okay.
First motion, we accept number twenty-six.
I'll second it. Saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-seven, discuss and approve Walker County County Choice Silver twenty twenty-four renewal.
This year, they sent us some different options on the retiree can choice silver for the retirees over sixty-five. So one option is we can leave it the exact same way it is. It almost percent mirrors what the regular employees have. It would increase twenty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents a month. So roughly ten thousand dollars for the year to keep all the coverage of the thing. Add it's a new option where we could do a Medicare Advantage Plan. It is a little bit cheaper, but there are pros and cons of the Advantage Plans. With the Advantage Plan, you're limited on the doctors that you can see in our area. Talking with TAC, a lot of the groups that swapped to the Advantage swapped back at the next renewal. So I gave y'all all three packages, but my recommendation would be is to renew and keep the current plan that we have. And that way it keeps the retirees, like I said, almost identical to the same coverage that they had as employees.
Well, that's my motion.
That's my motion.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Number, we still, yeah, Rachel?
I think she's there.
Okay, we're gonna go back to number twenty. Discuss and take action on EMS applying for HRSA grant number twenty-four dash oh six nine in regards to the funding of a community paramedic program.
Hello, sorry about the technical difficulties on my end. So we've been shopping around for some different ways to kind of fund the community health paramedic program that we mentioned a little while back. So we found this grant through HRSA or the Health Resources Services Administration, and they are giving out federal grants with no match. They have a total of two hundred and forty-eight million dollars that they're looking to give out to sixty recipients. So this grant will fund a program for four years before we would have to pick it up. So what we're asking in the grant with the county's permission, of course, is if we could ask for a million dollars, which would cover the salary, startup fees, vehicle, specialized equipment we would need. And it would fund the position for four years before we'd have to pick it up. So that's kind of what we've been looking into. The deadline to get all of our information in is October eighteenth. So I've kind of attached the packet of information for you guys. So we've just been working on that. They should be issuing the awards in somewhere between January and March, I believe, of twenty twenty-four. And then, of course, there are certain deadlines and parameters to meet regarding how the program is progressing. But I think this would be a good way to get this program on in the county sooner rather than later. Obviously, if we were awarded the grant.
So why are we only asking for a million? Why are they doing? So there's sixty of them. It's two hundred and forty-eight. That's four point one million apiece.
Correct. I mean, we can ask for for more. I mean, with our, you know, figuring out the costs of what it would cost, since it only covers four years, that should be ample amount of funding. But I mean, we can go back and look at it again and ask for more.
Can you explain exactly what this grant's gonna be about? I mean, what are we trying to, what are we trying to do here?
So we're trying
Don't get me wrong, but
So we're trying to implement a community health paramedic program. It would encompass kind of addressing our high utilizer groups, which we spoke about a couple of months ago when we came to court during budget time. It would implement a kind of telehealth aspect of it. It would be a full-time person that would be eight to five, essentially, Monday through Friday. This person does community outreach. They partner with the hospital. They partner with local doctors' offices to try to reach these patients that kind of abuse or overuse EMS in the capacity that's not really designed for. So that we can get them the resources they need to better care for themselves, whether that's you know, helping them to pick up their prescriptions or make their doctor's appointments, or, you know, if they're being discharged after a surgery and they don't have somebody at home to help them change their dressings. We can go assist them with that. So they're not calling nine-one-one for, you know, I ran out of my medication and now I need to go to the hospital because I don't have a ride and I don't have somebody to help me. We can kind of identify these people, which we have identified these people, and work to keep them out of just this healthcare system that's a burden on EMS and the community and the hospital. It keeps them from getting shipped out of county when they don't necessarily need it. So the point of it would be to kind of cut down on a certain group of high utilizer calls and get those patients really the care that they need instead of, you know, taking a truck out of service for something that's not really a true emergency. Patient outreach, community education would be an aspect of it as well.
Yeah, I'm not against going out for the grant, Rachel, but there's always a chance that we can't fund that thing at the end. You know, so that has to be known.
And my, my thought process was that maybe we could start setting, like budgeting to set aside some funds for this so that if we did receive the grant, when it's time for the county to pick it up, it's not as big of a you know, impact. We would kind of
Yeah, and that goes back if we have the funding. Let me just put it that way. I mean, I don't have an issue with looking at what you're saying, if we can do it. But there's times when the money gets pretty tight up here.
Well, I mean, we've already committed to doing something Riverside next year that we've, we've set aside money for this year. It would have to be rolled in the tax rate. Rachel, are we talking about just one person or two people or?
This would be Yeah, so this would be one person. They would need a vehicle. They would do things like house calls. They would go out and check on certain patients. The idea would be that a patient would get referred to this program. They'd be with us for a short amount of time, and as soon as we get them kind of the resources that they need, then they're back on their own. But it would encompass things like house calls, or if there's a psych call that comes out and we know it's a patient that calls all the time, maybe we don't initially deploy an ambulance. Maybe we send out our community paramedic out there to see if, you know, do they need to go to Pet C? Do they need? Do they just need somebody to sit with them for a while? Do they need a doctor's appointment? Have they run out of their meds? So that's kind of what this position would be.
They would have office space too, I would assume.
Yes, that would be ideal. Obviously, we're at a point where we don't have, like, you know, a ton of offices to put them in, but we've been making everything else work with our limited space so we can make this work too.
Yeah, I mean, I think, kind of like Ronnie said, I mean, I think it's a, a good shot, you know, I mean, if we get it, we'll it's definitely a need. I do, and also worry about the ongoing. If we can keep it going.
Yeah.
Well, one good thing is we can, we can give them the authorization to go to build the grant and go look for it, and they don't award it until next July, which is kind of in our budget cycle. And we can start, you know, we can talk about it at that time, but at least let them give it a shot and see if they can get the funding. You know, at least get, they get in the horse race and see if we'd be considered. It's only like, what, what does it say, like sixty grants or something like that? So if you get one, it'd be nice. Only way to get it is to try and so my motion is to authorize them to pursue HRSA grant number twenty-four dash zero six nine.
Second. Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-one, discuss and take action on renewal of VFIS insurance policy for EMS expected October first, twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
So this is just our auto insurance for all of our ambulances and things. It's up for renewal on the first. So I've attached that for you guys. I believe it's gone up just a little bit due to kind of our ATV and new vehicles and things, but it's pretty in line with, you know, the normal increases that we experience each year. So
I make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-one as presented.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-two, discuss and take action on renewal of Stryker Pro Care contract due nine thirty twenty twenty-four in the amount of forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
So this is our maintenance contract for our EMS stretchers, stair chairs, equipment that is, you know, maintained by Stryker. So we've had an increase of a little over fifteen thousand dollars just just due to inflation, but it is also due October first, I believe, or September thirtieth.
Yeah, is this in your budget, Rachel?
It was.
I think it is.
Yes, it was. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-two as presented. Seven.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Going back down to twenty-eight. Discuss and take action requesting to approve award of solicitation number C two, three, six, zero, dash, two, three, dash, zero, one, five, G I S Services. It's Karen.
Want to make sure.
Morning, George.
Yeah.
I've provided y'all the evaluation. Solicitation was let the only frame is the I don't know if it might be a big tab, but that's what it is and how the scores were laid out. Lone Star Geographic Solutions was the highest score of of the four vendors. The documentation is behind it as the difference in the offers and the proposal. There was a technical team that met and scored them as well as cost. We analyzed the cost. Andy helped. So again, the recommendation is to award to Lone Star Geographical Solutions being the one that can offer the services and in that.
Miss Cheryl, who was on the scoring team here?
On the technical?
Yes.
I had Andy Isbell and Tim Whitecotton and Danny Perkins.
I'll make the motion, we accept the G I S Services with Lone Star being our
I'll second that.
Moving, saying it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-nine, discuss and take action for approval of contract fee modifications for civil engineering services with wild engineering contract number C two, three, six, zero, dash, two, one, dash, zero, zero, eight. C two, three, six, zero, dash, two, one, dash, zero, zero, eight.
Uh, this is a scheduling fee that is being revised due to a new requirement, uh, Mr. Isbell, Andy Isbell had, uh, come to y'all last court and it asked for the revisions in the fee. And this is due to, um, a modification needing done to the schedule. Uh, this is being presented to be approved.
I make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-nine as presented.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty, discuss and take action on guidance of solicitation number C two, three, six, zero, dash, twenty-three, dash, zero, one, six, road material.
So this was the solicitation for the fourteen line items that were not bid on in the road materials, this solicitation that was awarded, um, back in, on the twenty-eighth. Uh, we received one bid for one line item. So we still have thirteen line items, um, that we do not have a bid on, um, or an offer. So I wanted to discuss with you guys, um, where you wanted to go from here.
Yeah.
And I, I've got that's kind of what the girl got on the workshop at the bottom too.
Yes, I do.
So if we could.
Come back to it later.
I would think so. I mean, I don't have any information here to look at, so.
You're correct.
So we're on table that?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the table? We just move on. Thirty-one, discuss and take action to award bid primary and secondary for road material.
Okay, so we have a new big tab and again, uh, last meeting, we had discussed the award of the road materials and had designated primary and alternate, uh, vendor. And this is just to memorialize what we had discussed last time. Uh, I'm thinking line item thirty-one is a correction that needs to be made, uh, brought to our attention on, uh, slot where it says A is for alternate delivery and pickup. Uh, he is a alternate delivery, but he will be primary pickup. Color coding depicts that. The wording did not. So I will revise that wording to show.
Now, the color coding, I haven't seen it and looked at it, Ms. Cheryl, but is it the exact same as the one I had, right?
Yes, it is. It is the exact same. We changed the S for secondary to A for alternate according, uh, to the desire of the council. Uh, we changed it from secondary to alternate.
Okay. All right, I'll make the motion to approve agenda item thirty-one with the, um, correction to, to the pickups versus delivery corrections you recommended.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we need the minutes to reflect somehow who the bids are awarded to. And most of our motions, the actual, uh, agenda item itself lists the vendors that are receiving the awards. And this, if, uh, it needs to, the minutes need to reflect who's actually receiving the bids or at least reference a specific document that, uh, is, is available should someone look at this six months from now.
So we could put in there the, uh, this bid number, the C twenty-three, sixty, twenty-three, dash, one.
Right, and then as per the bid tab, uh, dated so-and-so, some sort of reference, um, because it's, uh, when you go back and look at the minutes, it's very generic. You don't really know what bid you're awarding, and you don't know who you're awarding it to.
Y'all stated in the minutes, y'all stated he was primary and he was alternate, but the, having it written in writing, uh, memorializes even more. And if you'll notice, this is dated, uh, today's date, so.
You know, a- as a court, you want me to list it all out, or do you want me to reference that document?
Reference that. I'd say reference the document.
That's what I was. Thank your motion.
Yeah, and the.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. To my motion then, just for clarity then, all right? So I'm gonna make the motion to approve the road materials bid reflected in document C two, three, six, zero, dash, twenty-three, dash, zero, one, one, road materials dated Monday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, with the same grammatical correction recommended by this county.
Is that right, Ms. Allen?
If that gets us there.
Yes, thank you, Carrie. Just long as there's a reference that, uh, anyone that's looking at the minutes can reference a document, yes.
Yeah, motion in a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Uh. So we're gonna pause for a minute, resume, and then we'll be right back up.
Yes, yes.
You wanna let them know we're ending the meeting and?
Yeah, we're gonna end the meeting and then we're gonna start right back up on Zoom. We've hit our time limit today on that meeting.